Kind of keep things organized and sometimes the best, the best design needs we have is when we get off the agenda and really go off on our. So, um. You know, and really, you know, so we're basically at the existing conditions and you guys are, oh yeah. You know, when I was walking the site, I just kind of took a big look around it and noticed how great the fields are. You guys have great dugouts. Got lights on this one field and I think you have probably conduit in the post host or future lights on this field. Um, you know, the restrooms are right here, community building, dog park is in great condition, sand volleyball course. Doesn't mean that they do very much.
Your deer.
Yeah, and then the horseshoe pits. So, you know, a nice community park as is, but like I mentioned, the fields one and two are such great condition that. I mean, those sometimes are the most expensive things to build in the parks. We gotta have a great foundation to take it to the next level. So. Uh, that's what we're here is to try to get your input, try to determine a park program. And then, um, I brought some little puzzle pieces of fields and stuff like that. So we can kind of move things around and see how things fit in there. And exactly what do you want in, in your park? So, um. What I like to do when we design a park, I want to get your input first. Let's go in the future. What is? Your visionary ending for this park? Is it a, a park where you want to bring in baseball tournaments regionally? Or is it a park that is going to be for local communities as well as Flatville? Or is it going to be a park just basically for Flatville and its residences and the programs that you guys have? So, I like to start with that kind of ending vision and maybe kind of see where that takes us as far as, as the design goes.
I see it as just a Flatville.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Wouldn't you say hosting some events there from outside there to kind of offset some of the costs would be beneficial too?
Yeah, just like they're doing now.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we were the facilities for other clubs to use. We had rec tournaments there.
Okay.
And they're mostly as a community facility.
Okay. Cause I know sometimes if there's four fields and all of a sudden Triple Crown might give you a call. Paolo might give you a call. So I don't know if there was those discussions or thoughts, you know, if you expand it a little bit more. Do you want to have interest from those types of organizations to bring tournaments in? Um, you know, like Nelson Farms, they have four fields there and there's tournaments there. Not knowing if that's kind of a route you guys were discussing or talking about or not even think about yet?
Probably not.
Yeah.
I think the biggest thing was that our rec is, they're always looking for practice fields to practice time and play on and stuff. And that's why we were looking at this here property and Mike brought it up last month about this group. We had conceptual, we have a softball field open here that we, we will, we've already got ball fields around. So why don't we make that as a, you know, something with soccer and football and.
Right.
And not just make.
Yeah, a big multi-use field that can be programmed for different sports and.
Right.
Yeah, so. Okay. So, knowing that, um, you know, that kind of lets focus in on exactly what you guys want as far as the community, um, the community park goes. So, um.
Then maybe George Jim we were talking about and.
Yeah, and you know, we printed what Brad, um, presented, I don't know how long ago or not Brad, but.
Generations over a while.
Yeah, and so I don't know if we want to take a look at that real quick or if we just want to kind of start fresh and start from scratch, but. It might be helpful that we kind of go over this really, real quick. Um. You know, there's two, two additional baseball fields. It looks like a T-ball field and a softball field. Only one youth, you know, multi-use field. And then the volleyball and horseshoes are kind of, you know, pushed up a little bit and consolidated over by the dog, by the dog park. And then the community building, you know, probably connected to the community center building for obvious, for obvious reasons. Um, so from that, what are your thoughts as far as the program goes? Maybe from what you're just saying, maybe there's not enough soccer fields and maybe you don't need two, two baseball, no, two additional baseball.
Right.
I think, yeah, we didn't hear right from us a few, few baseball.
We, yeah, we discussed about keeping this as open parking pit.
And moving the stuff to here, moving the dog park somewhere else.
Putting the horseshoe pit. So physically moving. Keeping the horseshoe pits there, keeping that as parking, um, possibly putting a batting cage or something over here, but. Turning that into a multi-use, not being like grass fields for football, soccer, uh, stuff like that. Possibly making this a multi-use field for, uh, hosting. Like if there's soccer games at the same day as football games, you can do both.
Right.
Or possibly T-ball set up there. You don't need a backstop.
Right. And we just paint the line where the grass is.
I think we all agreed we'd like to do these, you know, these parking lots and that and the else.
So is volleyball about the only thing that would go away or is that trying to find a spot still somewhere?
I think we're probably gonna keep, uh, volleyball pits.
Yeah, it could probably be reorganized at the outside with volleyball and then there's some idea about maybe a single test court with some basketball goals or something.
Oh yeah.
You know, I was over in, I'm meeting this weekend and sure we're parking a pickleball.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that's the one that's picking up.
Pickleball.
It's getting popular.
Yeah.
But they were like adults over there.
Yeah.
You know?
Like Jim said, if your pickleball is like taking over the tennis world, right?
Yeah.
Every single tennis court now, stripe for pickleball or taken or whatever. And I don't think I've played it. I've played it a couple times. This, it's a lot of fun.
That's a tennis.
Yeah, it is. But yeah, I mean, yeah, it is, it's pretty fun. So, um. You know, the next step then, you know, we can take, take these like puzzle pieces and, you know, start rearranging things based on. What you think the town is looking for as, for this park. Um. The community building, I, I just kind of used again duplicated it, um, you know, for the, for the gym. Gym, up indoor volleyball, basketball, um, those types of uses. Um, with the dog park. I'm skipping around a little bit, but who knows this will be the dog park wanting to stay in this location or we can move it.
Yeah.
I would kind of like it right where it's at.
I mean, it's a nice.
If we discuss about moving and putting a small T-ball.
I think we talked about when we were put it next to the road. Some people want it, you know, like kind of creepy all the way back here. We do have it lit up now, but I think that was part of this discussion.
Yeah, and yeah, that makes sense to get it kind of closer to the road and might be using more, same to the basketball.
People walk along the road with their dogs.
Right. Yeah, so the, it'd be more likely to use it more. Okay, so that is a, that is a flexible space.
We could put it right here.
So we're over here.
I'd probably.
I mean, yeah, so over here, just kind of undeveloped right now. What's the relationship with those residents there with the town today?
All the great.
They're great.
They're just crappy. We get along with them, but.
Dog park still in here then?
Yeah. Dog park connected to their house or their lights.
I wouldn't want this public dog park either.
Yeah, I think I should be sensitive.
Well, our rock lot, which is the, the corner, we talked about cutting that half or reducing it. Right now it's a hundred by hundred foot square. So you can actually expand the dog park if you let it there and just expand it. Take out that rock lot. That's one concept. People have talked to me about it. It's like they, they like it. We also missed in a small grass area, but it's a little small. So.
The dog park is small.
Someone said that.
There's a, whenever I'm known when there's some times I hardly see more than one.
Your dog there.
You know, at the time, so.
Yeah, I took a picture of it. It's right here.
So with that being said though, we talked about this, we had a T-ball set up over here. We discussed we want to keep this. Like the horseshoe staying the same, but keep this for parking for, you know, access to both fields. Cause if you move this here down, down here, you have more access to the road. But now. What we're gonna do with that back there, with the horseshoe pits up there, like this, maybe it's like one or two more volleyball courts or something.
Like you said, parking, you might want to have something more central for parking. Maybe this does.
And you see like.
And you guys said you got two once a year?
Yeah.
The volleyball gets used once a year, but they're looking at potentially trying to do a summer, fall directly if they're saying.
It's something that is heavily loved in the area. I don't see a state that would.
Keep it, but we can move it.
Yeah. It's interesting. You started by talking about your kids who are, who are skate, who are riding their bikes in the detention pond. It makes me wonder about a skate park. Cause I've noticed.
We have one on our review.
That's true.
Yeah.
That went down.
Not a good location.
Okay. Okay. Okay, well. So these, this, this map is at forty scale. You know, these. Basically like a youth junior high school field. This one here is more like a high school field. But these two fields do fit nicely right there. Still need parking over there. So then we have all this.
Well, I think, I think that's what Mike's gonna do. Cause we've got a big list of keeps, maybe moves. And I think that's where he's lending is once we start throwing all the wishes, you'll realize that this space will get occupied really quick. So I think that's where you're gonna find her. Like what he said, let's put all the puzzle pieces and see how it's gonna manipulate and realize something's gotta go.
Something's gotta go. There's only one home for, for something that you guys want. So then it, then to kind of see what's left over and kind of make it work. And not to look like you're just, you know, putting things here and there.
Is that science building, uh, the community building, the community, is that, I mean, big enough for, um, bleachers that come out of the wall and?
I don't know, you know, offhand. I just use that footprint of this building, um.
Yeah, Troy had one that he, he from the, uh.
Basically the exterior dimensions of the large gym, old gym and the hill crest, which has a front foyer, concession area, all this. Like full gym with bleachers on the backside. There's locker room for men and women. So.
Okay.
A little bit bigger than just a basic gym. So.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty close. That's a little bit more square.
Yeah, a little more square than that. And then this piece right here is, is town property now.
Oh, this whole strip is.
It's just basically scraped.
Yep, exactly.
That's nice. Cause you can get some kid parking in here.
Size down.
Options on apartments too. So you're not just all one area. So people aren't having to park, walk all over the place.
And I think that's where for us is the flow issue, like you're mentioning is getting people to be able to, they need to circulate interior to parking. Then, then in and out of Reynolds, out of every individual driveway. So.
Right, and those two ponds are going away.
Correct.
Okay, that was another question.
Yes.
That's, that's where this comes into play. And then we just are gonna have to work around this. This is, this is open at this point, but if we have to pipe it, we have to pipe it.
Okay.
So.
And that's that, it's not being piped as part of.
No, um.
Well, there's a pipe.
Yeah, there's, there's a pipe there, but I think we've also got an open, yeah, it's not very deep.
Convenance.
Next to the community center, how they got, pardon that.
It's piped, but then we've got kind of that.
We've got an open.
Open swale kind of thing.
North end of it, right?
Yeah. So anyway, we can manipulate as we need, but I think that's where this connectivity is going to be from here and here. We're not gonna be able to put a structure over it. We don't want storm under it. So that's gonna be really our only limitation to stay far enough away if we ever have to replace something. But roads, parking, those kind of things over the top of it, um, should be fine. So. But yeah, that's our biggest concern with parking and access and circulation that you don't want to have driveways too close to the intersection.
So if we piped that with the parking.
Is there a thing we want to.
Would that new space?
Yeah. Yeah, we could just, if we needed to put that parking, I think that's where we were going with this is we had that connectivity coming from this side to connect to this parking lot. Um. Yeah, I, I think there's still an excessive, I, and that's where these guys get involved, but this is kind of fundamentally a different operation than these ball fields being multi-purpose. So again, it goes back to this is going on. Is everyone going to be here? This becomes more of an overflow.
Yeah, that's kind of how.
I was gonna say, I kind of like this better being that they're parking in here.
Parking between that and this place.
So some people go here, some go there.
The one, and I, I thought about that and one thing to consider though is when you have a big field like that and as seasons go on. You can rotate them a little bit and try to size them. So wear and tear and maintenance. You can switch orientations and sizes as.
When it's massive like that, we can do multiple things with it. Like we have a giant car show there. We can, we can do, it opens the doors. So.
Yeah.
You're talking for a massive parking lot there. Are you talking right?
I'm talking about this.
You can use the field like you have it that big, not separating the two.
Know what Brad was saying too about making the intersection to the parking. Maybe it's right here instead of closer. Where you have more conflicts, the closer the intersection is.
Yeah.
And I think that's where we ended up there with trying to get parking in too many places versus, this is a big open green space, but then it gives you, I think someone had mentioned earlier, even if you threw T-ball. On a couple of the corners, you know, it gives you, like you say, it's different soccer fields, changing orientation.
Right.
Football, T-ball, you can pretty much do anything with a nice three hundred by three hundred.
So that would be all pavement parking there? What we're looking at there?
It could be, it could be. Um, I think that's where it kind of goes back to the parking calendar. I think as this squares up, but you know. Again, do we want to interconnect these two buildings, keep them separate? I think that's kind of one of those fundamental questions. Even how they operate right now. Do you want to interconnect and still maybe have a.
That would be, that'd be, that's a lot of feet there.
I think they can, they can't go all the way.
Yeah.
I think a close one. A couple of feet between the open.
But that's what we could put the community gardens and everything and make a walkway through.
Then there could be like a network of walkways and the sidewalks and.
Well, then the one thing that this site already leads you onto, there's a strong kind of pedestrian connection going right down the middle. So I think there's a cool opportunity, you know, to connect both of these uses by this cool promenade that goes down the middle.
That's what naturally happens at harvest days anyways, is that, that's natural.
That's your back porch.
Yep, very much.
And like, like Jim was saying, you know, kind of segregating the different parking allows, you know, not everybody just going to one parking spot and. Having all the cars in one spot and then people are trying to get from here to here and all that. So kind of three smaller parking spaces. With really distinct different uses. You got the ball fields, kind of traditional park uses here and then the existing baseball fields there for.
So what other cutouts do we have to add?
Um, so we got batting cages. We should have an existing batting cage here, which maybe is not the best location. Um.
Troy.
You know, a lot of times.
Suggestions too.
You know, a lot of times you'll want the batting cages, you know, one on each field.
Is that where you were thinking was on your plan?
That's kind of.
I like the idea, sorry, I was gonna say this promenade could be a really cool feature. That's some kind of decorative concrete or something like that with trees and benches and things like that. Like you set up booths or something like for fair or car show.
Right, right.
That could be a real strong, um, design element there. So then maybe you don't want to walk that off, you know, keep that open.
Could we put a batting cage over the drainage or is that too much? Is that, okay.
That's, that's, yeah, as long as I just push it, push it down a little bit. I mean.
Okay.
Again, I, those are.
Those things we can.
Okay. And then what else do we have?
Um, the volleyball courts.
Okay. Oh, I look huge on the map, but from your back.
That's a whole lot to say right there. You know, and then I, I did tennis courts. I know that tennis courts weren't on here. Um, yeah.
Right there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was gonna be like a tennis slash basketball.
Right, and then the basketball courts.
Okay. Do they do tennis slash basketball courts?
No, typically not.
Okay.
Um.
Or pickleball tennis court?
Yeah, the, the, you know, the, the tennis courts would be the pickleball slash tennis courts and you would, um, stripe them for both uses.
Okay.
So would the basketball also side, I know it's not sand, um, that be able to be utilized as volleyball as well?
No.
Or you might really use it from a concrete.
No, not outdoor, but indoor basketball courts can be duly used for, for both, yeah.
And then do you have a cutout of a little T-ball field thing?
Well, you know what? It was two twenty. So two twenty is, I don't have it for T-ball. Um.
So that would be a big cutout one.
But this would be softball and little league. Um, but yeah, T-ball are basically, I mean, it's like a hundred feet.
Oh wow, okay.
So, I mean, if somebody had scissors. Yeah, it's pretty tiny.
Do we have scissors in that?
Question about facilities, using the facilities. The restrooms are gonna be open to the public.
You want to open it?
They're using.
Oh.
These during the day. Or.
We do mix it up. Especially on those restrooms. Is that, is that enough to handle all that? Do we need to add another, like if you're having public over here, um. Would, would we need to have club wood building available for access?
So like in Milliken, they have the building can be completely locked. All the restrooms are unlocked.
Cause they're.
Their door is.
They're exterior.
So yeah, that's something that's a good idea.
Cause these people are gonna want to walk all the way over here to the bathroom.
Right.
With a screaming kid? Come on, where's your sense of adventure? Mike, what do you think?
Where's the splash pad going?
No, that's going to Lincoln Park. They're still working on that in Lincoln Park.
Somebody paid you to say that.
It's a commission for every time he has.
And David just loves it. He swears to a big when you mention that.
So I'm not sure whether we need two basketballs and two tennis pickleball courts. Do we, one of each? And we could put something back here, right? Or did we already discuss doing something else about?
Can we do like a, one of those gazebo barbecues like at Lincoln Park or what?
I wouldn't want that back there.
Not by the.
Yeah, back here and we put a dog park there or?
What do you think about Troy?
Yeah, I would, I mean, if we're gonna do that, I would maybe. Maybe something like that or keep it here. So there's still some connect, you know, some association with it.
Multiple that, and they're still that small as you go in the background.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah.
That's right.
Put it over by that maybe.
Just like the volleyball up and, T-ball's gonna be the younger kids. That's a long ways to walk from the parking lot.
And I know this is a huge area, but there's two volleyball courts there, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so they're just long ones. They're two of them.
Being T-ball, we got that porta potties over there, sun restroom facility.
Yeah, it can just work it out of that way for sun orientation too.
Sure. Oh yeah, batting cage in between that's smart.
And you still have that. I mean, that's why I have to slide down a little bit. Cause we can't really change the contours of the pond.
Oh, but you may be able to make it a little bit more. I know it's not the right, but it narrows down that.
The other thing we were talking about.
And this is a double cage too, so.
Okay, we were talking about putting the playground there, right Troy?
Yeah, the, there's a small garage right there on the right and then on the left is an old.
Yeah.
That shelter. I thought about ripping that out and doing it with the playground. It may not be part of that.
Yeah.
Cause my, my son plays paddleball. So we're going to Kansas City, Longford, and I've been to all of these complexes. We were talking about Triple Crown, we were there last week. And they have the cutest little, you know, the older kids are playing, but the playgrounds I've seen are, are for like six, seven year olds and under.
Right.
And they don't take a lot of room. And many of them are covered with benches and tables. So mom and dad.
Were you at a real sports park this week?
Or yeah, exactly.
That's where I was as well. So I know exactly.
So we were there with our, our parker and our batting crate complexes.
Right, so with the building as this, we don't need that. And so we could put that there potentially, correct?
So I was thinking, sorry Mike.
Go ahead.
Like this is kind of like the central feature here. Like what if you had some kind of entry plaza? And maybe the playground's kind of in front of that. So while the kids are, their big brothers playing or the families watching the game, the little kids can be playing out here. But this whole thing feels like you come in the parking lot and you're like, boom, there's the main event right there, you know? You made some cool little playground or something like that.
And he could.
It's covered.
Right, yeah.
Shade cells, pergolas, something like that.
That new one in Greeley, on the west side of Greeley's got the baseball team park. The sun being shaved over it.
Is that.
Over there by the fun flex, but over by the road. They just put all the new tall baseball teams. And it's right on the outside.
Right.
It's all baseball.
Don't we keep our trees across there?
Two of them.
Just.
Right now.
And those are side by side. So yeah, so if you did.
One in one.
One in one, yeah.
One on each side or whatever.
Yeah, every year because we only have two fields. We have one batting cage and it's, it's been more than sufficient. Cause it's really used for practice time.
Yeah.
Not really the game time.
Right.
So.
So, but two would be awesome.
Two would be great, but those are double cages, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we only need one.
So what, what is this right here? This is something important. Can we?
Yeah, that's our, our wellhouse and our pump station for the irrigation system.
So we don't want the bat, we don't want the dog park on that.
No, we can't move that.
No, so.
And that well is a line that goes diagonal up to the corner where that grass is basically to irrigate those two fields. So you can't really build anything over that. Just let that be.
Two of these right here, you come out of the building.
What's this building for?
Oh, like for indoor basketball.
Come out and then you have the outdoor courts right there.
And then the. Yeah, that kind of makes sense.
Then you're not.
Private property again, playing basketball.
Then you can just expand this parking lot.
Yeah.
The cross through here, have your opening here, roll through here, roll through here in front of everywhere. I like that flow. You're creating a new shape with your parking. I like that idea too.
Next, just have.
Good circulation.
Yeah, you'll have an entrance here, one here, one here and then.
Yeah, there might not be vehicular truck, you know, connection from here to here, but you'd have the.
Creates a secondary, but it, but I think that's its own events. I think the way you've got it structured right now.
Yeah, like an event or something. You can still get up here. A fire truck or something.
This is a different outdoor stuff, right? With your horseshoes and your sand volleyball when you're.
That's, I mean, and that's basically the size of the dog park.
Is that parking on the west there?
It has.
It's really an overflow parking or anything else going on. Right. Yeah, you still create that, that walk spaces there, but, but I like that flow. Cause you're gonna be more that, that's the one parked here.
I mean, it's kind of nice.
It even gives them better.
Enough to use up all the space, you know, I mean, teams can gather right here for.
Yeah.
Football, enough football and baseball, you know, and, you know, and coaches and the teams kind of, you know, that are waiting. I mean, it's a nice grassy area over there. Um.
Are we missing amenities somewhere?
I feel like.
We had a big, we had a big old, I was trying to jot them all down. Dog park, two fields, community center, horseshoes, horseshoes, gym.
Get the walking path.
Walking path.
Around on the other side.
That's where this might, this, that might be where this gets a little bit textured, but. But that's kind of doable too.
And then, you know, we have a tennis courts here with the basketball courts. Is that something maybe more big here or?
I think it'd be better by the two days myself.
I would agree as well.
Cause that's typically where you're gonna have those features to fix the structure.
Right.
Can I just do one basketball court?
Yeah, one tennis.
Or probably just one of each. Be more sufficient.
Yep.
We're trying to squeeze.
And if we put those sideways, cause there still is the possibility the board needs to decide on this fifty foot.
Yes.
So.
But I think that'll give us the room here. Cause if we have to slide down, right? And we have to come down here, that still gives us. Cause if we have to slide down, right, and we have to come down here, that still gives us, that still gives us a set of that.
Yeah, right here at the fix line, it's about right, yep. Boy, the this, the way you did this puts it into big time perspective.
We're looking at.
Was this one here? Yeah, this is the dog, this is basically the same size.
Same size dog, sorry.
I know. Awesome.
So that's kinda. Well, then that's where you go back to the.
Yeah.
Shape of the the gym and those kind of things and.
Building.
Yeah, I know, massages.
Cause now when we start pinching it that way, now there's no roof, that just becomes an access driving handle, which is a little bit goofy.
So.
What about like a parent drop off, drop your kid off? At the front entrance. Yeah, I think, you know, there would be like.
You could.
There would be some kind of room here.
Yeah.
And then park the other side, drop off.
It can be dropped off on the road as well.
Yeah, like.
Well, it's like, I mean, we'll probably be doing that anyway, just like every school, right?
Yeah.
Quarter off your creative.
Yeah, you could do like a landmark building on the corner, you know, with architecture, maybe it's like, you know, the bow of the ship.
There was.
Here you come, and then you have the roundabout and the park and all that stuff.
Absolutely. Is there a reasoning for having those two buildings close together, Troy? I feel like there was a reason.
There's two, I'm sorry. Gym and a community center, just because it's close to the.
Janet has to do both jobs and it's quick.
Exactly.
Wait, someone said the other front does.
Yeah, I know, because that's the seniors, I don't have that building, it's seniors.
So it's close proximity to walk back and forth and and maintenance and and with the rec, if we get rid of that. With the rec ship, call it behind community center now for storage and their their ATV and go, it's already too small.
Right, yeah.
So we need to make sure that we have an ample sized maintenance building somewhere.
Okay, so.
Close to the ball fields.
Oh yeah.
And that's that's all on right there.
Well, right here, but I thought it was still usable when we originally sought to put something back here.
That that would probably work, but we need to actually have something bigger than we currently have now.
Okay.
For all the equipment and the.
So.
Well, if we could move it over here for the, oops, it's right toward the uh. The old batting cage is where.
Yeah, all that.
That would kinda protect the McCormick property too.
That would work as a. That would wanna be close for the drag net and it forward and everything else.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's kinda simple, I like that.
Well, I'm not sure you guys think about down the road over time that is actually what what's gonna fill that space for you.
There's a water park.
Well, the the well, the only reason why I'm saying that is think about the parking, like we're saying if you can't connect that now, but down the road. Did that end up keeping out the span that out, so when we're talking about adding another structure, I'd be more inclined to be bringing it further downward.
Oh yeah.
Doesn't end up being in the way for that long term access, and then you have that full parking area altogether, so.
I see what you're saying. Yep, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet?
What what is this here that?
That's the uh horseshoes.
I kinda like that setup, that's neat.
Now, the horseshoe area, how many pits does that involve, Mike?
Right now, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, so one of my questions was, is that?
We don't need that.
That's what I was wondering, so I'm thinking maybe, you know, cut it in half.
Well, I thought at one point we were talking four four horseshoes and maybe some cornhole, or more normal.
Okay.
You can do the permanent corner.
So if we leave it the same size, then we have the room for the four and four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, just more riding.
Even if it wasn't, come on, the building is twenty foot setback.
And I'm trying to center it on this, you know, the, you know, that existing gazebo and use that as a focal point for for this use.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna load that, because this is additional weight, so technically this is gonna almost have, if we put it on that corner.
All right.
Sorry, sir, uh Melissa was telling me that the building setback is twenty foot from right away, but this is that goofy notch. That I think as we go and re replat all of this thing, I think we've talked about, just. Straightening that out, um well, engineers gotta get involved at some point, but I think as this builds out, I still have a feeling, even though this road's got a swag at this point. I have a feeling we're gonna need that extra lane for turn lane and through lane, and so I think moving that which will.
You just anticipate that right up the line.
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe this building gets changed to this. Maybe it's just like, yeah, two wings or something. Yeah, outside.
Yep, that's where we'd have to look at the gym park and all the.
It's like tall or something.
Room for a sidewalk then?
Then you get your drive thru.
Yeah.
That'd be quite a parks where it comes through there or something.
Yeah, and I think that's that interactive.
Yeah, within that corner really.
Realm and stuff, so.
That corner.
Like the gateway to the whole park.
Yeah, I think the road or something north or something.
Be pretty cool.
North, but I think because of where that road's at that way.
When you got the trail, you want it all around.
And we have working.
So it's another way to do it, but. That's making more trail less to connect that.
Perfect.
More procreated about this.
Yeah.
Yep, I like this.
I would probably move, I don't wanna keep changing things, but like keep those together, maybe that's like its own stuff. Yeah, that might not be a bad idea, like it's all the same, they all go out.
Well, with that in mind, I almost would move the volleyball back, because we have people come in to use these more than we have them come in to use our volleyball pits.
Or yeah. Yeah.
Like on their own.
Yeah.
That's just a thought.
Yep.
And it's not all the way.
Yeah, yeah.
And why are they so far from the road because?
Cause we don't like.
That's just.
That's just our breaker, we said it.
Yes.
Because. At that time, we were doing build up, I think it was in twenty eleven. The area back here was available plus, you know, except for some of the, it wasn't really, you know, what down next.
Yeah.
So you might actually have a bigger essential, it may be actually the more here. The potential of wingways.
Yeah.
And then we don't need that forty, we can just shut that up.
What is this for?
Uh this is discussions of whether this property line is gonna.
Oh, I could.
He must, he must have. This is fifty feet, that's fair.
Could the dog park go in this area? Is that reasonable?
It could, but you know, we were talking about, you know, right now it's already too far away from the street side, which we should farther away.
That's true.
And then the other comment we're talking about, this is such a nice grassy area as it is now, you know, for teams that are getting ready to play, they can.
Okay.
Need warm up.
Yep.
Um, you know, they can use this whole area to warm up.
Cause even a detention pond, we can have that as a warm up area when it's not full of water, right? Can we utilize a detention pond?
As long as water can keep soaking in.
There's no.
The more the more you use it, I'll just tell you in ten years, it'll be a little bit wet all the time, but.
Just happens with bluegrass and stuff like that, it's just over time.
Cattails. We are not, we're gonna disc it once a year.
Okay.
Or twice a year to keep it, so there isn't gonna be any grass, we're not irrigating it.
Gotcha, okay.
So it would it would be a sand pit.
Right.
And there's nothing wrong with that, there's nothing wrong with warming up in there, but we're gonna do our best to keep it dised up so that it will continue to absorb like it's supposed to.
Gotcha, okay.
And I think that's when we think about the trail network, um. I'm kind of a, and it'll it'll drive you nuts, but. You see it in schools all the time too, right, they're gonna find the path they wanna have, so that's kinda that hybrid is. Let the traffic, that's why I was saying if people are gonna go down there, you're gonna find out the where they find the easiest way to get down.
Right.
Yeah.
And so that's one of those, like you say, if this ends up being a gathering, you may find that trail area, you may have another shelter or two where they're warming up, but that's just a bigger path to get to. But then that's what Melissa and I were just talking about, I think even though this road is close to the right away. Instead of a standard sidewalk over time, make that more of that eight foot wide more trail, so then that gives you a better loop feel instead of. Call it street road, but incorporate that with a trail as well.
Make it less sidewalkish.
Yep, yep, exactly.
And then maybe starting out, if you just wanted to do like a crusher fine trail.
Yep.
It's budget, you know, you're trying to save money this year, and maybe five years down the road, you're like, oh, we'll change it to concrete or whatever.
Right.
So you could look at doing it that way too, so.
Nice, I like, I think everybody's wants are satisfied with this, am I incorrect?
Is is T-ball fields part of the program?
Yes, yep.
T-ball, with the the sort of handed fields is. The one on the left is a baseball field, one on the right is a a squirrel sawmill field, because the base dimensions are different, the sedentals are different, but. What we really have is twelve hundred. Cause there were boys, we had a fourteen hundred, which is used to mound, but now we're we're pushing everything to the valley summer baseball program. So we only have a fourteen hundred baseball team, so that we took that out of the mound. But when I thought of Janet, the biggest enrollment we have are the little girls and the T-ball boys, and that's where. Usually the grandparents come out and this and that, so we we talked about making sure we have a nice T-ball field, but. In my mind, close to restrooms and easy accessible.
Yep.
For the world chairs.
Yeah.
And.
Okay, well, this location then.
Is good.
Is good, I mean, it's as close as we can get to the restroom, you know, without affecting those fields, so.
And I know.
And parking right here, restroom.
An aerial picture makes it look a lot harder than it is.
Sure.
That's all I've always found, right, when you're walking, that's not that far.
Yeah, it really isn't.
Right.
What was your guys thought, the only thing that's not on here that I just wanna capture is you're talking about playground and moving that around, about that thought of kind of. Not that traditional box shape is what you're talking about, right, but it's.
Right, yeah, it could be, it could even be like two rectangles, you know, maybe there's like an older kids playground or a younger real top lot type playground, or. Or maybe it's one central.
I.
And you want it in the center, do you wanna throw it all off to the?
Oh, with the.
Well, so that that community building we rent out, and so if they have parties there, if we put it right there where you're that shed. Then when it's being rented out, that's where the kids can go play instead of ripping our walls apart.
Yeah, and and maybe like Jay was saying, maybe there's two for different ages, but I would I would be nervous as a parent having a playground right by the parking lot, so.
Oh, you offset it a little bit.
Really? Yeah, there's that kind of.
That was my worry on that gymnasium there, we're trying to put too much because of the west that he hit in the side of that building. That's where we were, I think originally we were talking about putting that outdoor right at the base of that building and being west facing, that was gonna be miserable.
Yeah.
So, but now this opens that up.
Yeah, that kinda gives it some.
But it'll give you that shade on the afternoon too, if you, and it and it's, we're tucking it more in here, especially if this is, but these, keep in mind, we can put those here.
Okay.
Cause it doesn't need to be a big playground.
Because it's not big.
Yeah.
And that get, that gives me more room for parking.
Yeah, cause you still have where that shed is to, you know, you're you have the whole area.
Yeah, the whole area, so the only thing I don't see on here is community gardens, which is something that I know the community wants. So but that can go right there where the drainage, yep, right there, right?
Sure.
Would that be?
Well, I don't know what I'm asking.
These users that use this building would use the community gardens?
No.
I I just, I wanna leave this for parking and circulation, I don't wanna narrow and funnel it down and channel people, I'd rather have at least we can get double, double lane to there.
Yeah.
Get water access there.
Yep. That's true.
I was thinking also on one side of the other, keep a buffer.
You got it.
Like you said later on, it's not a permanent structure, it's all later on for expansion.
Change it.
Yeah.
That was a good idea too.
Just kinda give a buffer.
Community gardens right here, right next to the corners, to get a bit of a buffer there for them.
That's a good point, yeah.
I like that, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really gonna have parking on this side, but at least.
Cause it's hiding the water here.
Yep, that makes perfect sense.
So we better take a picture of that.
Yeah, I'm gonna have a picture.
We take one.
Isn't this the McCormick's property right here?
Yeah, there's an area outside there.
That's dirt, yeah, that's theirs, so it, their property is actually this.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, yeah.
Oh yeah, yeah, good catch, good catch.
Well, this is sixteen.
Sixteen?
Plus a dinus, so it's closer to twenty, it's total.
So then.
So then they really have a nice buffer.
Five to this.
Yeah.
Nice walk with people looking at the garden.
Fifteen, yeah.
And that keeps more of that outdoor, right, with your volleyball and dog park, that's adding that more natural environment on that end of the.
Yes.
Part, right, that's like planning architectural.
Very good.
That's awesome. I love that.
Yeah, yeah, that's really our turf. And all the turf uses are just.
Yep, yeah, that's, I like that.
Your nation makes it easy, makes it makes it easier.
Makes it easy, David.
Makes it easy, David, yeah.
You ready?
Easy problem.
Troy, is there any other suggestions to add?
We just do what we're told. That's the right answer.
That's cool. The T-ball.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Sotted.
Get it done.
Yeah, I was trying to talk about the baseball complex, so they have the kids, T-ball field with like four foot high low bench lights.
Oh, really?
So the evenings they turn it on and the kids feel like they're all stars.
That's cute, that's cute.
It's just, it doesn't take much at all.
Right.
Are there any benches like along this way?
Yeah, before she did that.
Deandering, yeah, that's what I was saying, but the nice, make it nice, like stain it or stand it, they need to.
Decorate. Yeah, just nice.
Put trees and benches on it and.
If you're right down for shape.
Little gap between the fields.
Circle structures and yeah.
People want to have some.
Tea.
Congregate.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool, I think this one will max to the extent that it fits, this is more of the regulation, it's size, but if we're dealing, we're off of.
Yeah, soccer's just more, I mean, soccer fields can, you know, miss get the size based on the the site, but if you want football, I mean, that's.
In your stuff, yeah, okay, got it, okay.
Um, but only the like high school football, right, okay.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Cause we have a club in town and then everybody goes to high school, so and they have their own fields, so we're looking at, we kinda started off as a club. Well, not even that, cause we can use the stadium.
They go to the stadium.
I got a picture.
Taking one.
Okay.
We should probably take that now. Keep it in place.
Yeah.
I'm guessing, cause I know that's.
And then we could.
That's good.
Oh, it's great.[1602.14]
That's good.
We'll just push this picture.
Right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back and back check all, all this to scale when I get back, because, yeah, believe me.
You're gonna make us.
I, I, I already starts.
You gotta make it real, yeah.
The best still.
We don't have to make, have the dog, dog park be that big, you can, you know, make it skinnier.
Is that what the big square?
Yeah.
Is that kind of dog park?
Dog park area.
And what was this?
Uh.
Porches.
And I was gonna say, this isn't set in stone, so like you might have the fair or whatever, where everybody makes comments on it, we can switch things around and it's in flux, you know, so it'll be five years from now, it might be something totally different or whatever, you guys are like.
Like the flow is the whole, I'm sure.
Yeah.
From there, I believe things.
I think the community will get really excited about it, nice, pretty picture mounted on the board, and people walking by and looking at it, can talk to you guys about their thoughts and their needs and wants.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a comment box that if they don't like something, no.
The board members are gonna be there and we're gonna take the comments down.
Oh, we are.
I'll be right behind you.
True story.
They're just leading the charge.
You know I'll be there.
Oh, I know.
I'll be in Ohio.
I'll just take on a.
Cool.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, this, this stuff is fun. So our next step will then take this, give us probably a draft rendering before we go.
Yeah, we'll get with you on that, and I think create something kind of still, not super, but on at least those, that sort of little, find some better example of gym or whatever.
Yeah.
Create a concept, and then I think at that, we'll just give you the board. Do you want a blank board, too, just for the sake, or is this giving you the one, this is kind of what was discussed?
I think we keep it driven and focused with this, I just threw a blank board out there because it'll go too much.
Yeah, then they have the roller coaster.
Oh, we just had so much fun, let's just add a.
They'll be on pools and.
Oh, yeah, you're ready.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I'm gonna ask my kid in the winter if he wants the blue coat or the red coat. He's wearing a coat.
That's why you never ask a kid what you want for dinner if you're in trouble, right?
Yeah.
That's right.
Give them options.
So the, the drop-in deadline to have this prepared and ready for is probably the Friday night, which is August twentieth, which is our harvest date.
Oh, okay.
The board meets again August third, which is regular meeting, but if we could get something back to me to share with the board prior to the August twentieth deadline, so they, they're where in advance it could be raised, we'll have the community town move on the twentieth in the evening at One Park, where we have a family night, that's where it's more of a localized event. And then Saturday, the twenty first of August down at this facility, we'll all have a town move, but it probably won't draw as much attention because there's too much going on.
Yeah.
Right.
Friday night is more of a centralized, more of a focus where it's gonna get more attention Friday night, so just see.
And, and what's on August third and other?
August third is the board's regular meeting.
So, okay, that's a couple of weeks. I know we don't have a ton of time to get really super fancy with it. Do you want us to get together? We'll shoot you a draft, and if anything else, you can at least take it to the third and do one last check, and you guys, I think, could just do some minor, if we have to do some minor cleanups or this or that or whatever, and then producing it.
That's what I was gonna say, maybe on the third, just like a skeleton plan.
Yeah. You know, just make sure we're all on the same, same page.
Before we take it to the next level.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
Yep, so put a little bit in, we'll get it to you, and we got plenty of time with your guys' stuff, and we'll just, we'll do that and make sure we're on track. So, all right, okay. Huh?
How about swimming pool get in the middle of that?
It'll find a way, I'm sure, so. I'll fill it with parking, believe me, every little spot here, it'll be okay, it'll be.
Those were from Brad, you know, whatever.
These are all mine, put together.
We'll take a copy. Yeah, we just leave one.
Thank you.
Then that will take a copy for five. Well, thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, really good, we're really enjoying it.
I like the way you guys.
It helped interact. Yeah, thank you.
You sure? I can move the drinks where they need to go right now.
I've got workers coming in here tomorrow anyway.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thanks, guys.
Top of that, Troy.
Because this afternoon, Melissa was talking, well, we'll give about a half hour each topic, and we'll only seven thirty, so that gives about three and a half minutes to talk about this. Actually, our next topic on the comp plan that we talked about in general, um tonight's intent was not to resolve everything, actually, this will be one of several meetings coming up this fall, and we play this part of the process. Uh, we did plan on doing a comp plan update based upon last year's discussion on the water plan, because the comprehensive plan, which required by state called uh, in recent, last two years, since that's the requirements came out, that when you have comp plans, you need to have certain components added to them. So I'm gonna turn it over to Melissa for that brief conversation, because in all seriousness, like, I go by A P A plan. And again, this will be the first of several conversations, because it's a pretty big, uh, wheel with many spokes in it.
Yeah.
Okay, because we're also talking about regulations on, under code regulations, and then water conservation efforts. Uh, there's some mapping that we're, we've mentioned that we, we need to update. So, uh, Melissa's gonna start, I'm gonna time in, but, uh, the focus right now for the next half hour is talking about the comp plan and, and those requirements and elements we need to add to this document, which ten years ago, we did a full upgrade. Well, not upgrade, but we basically scrapped the old comp plan and started over. The previous planner, we had a bunch of community engagement, we had a DOLA grant, hundreds of thousands.
That wasn't two thousand seventeen.
What's that?
That wasn't two thousand seventeen, we weren't on board on that.
This was in twenty eleven, and Mark Cole was our planner at the time, and it was one of my first big events as town manager, I think about twenty ten. Don Santa Volga was just a grant. So in seventeen sixteen, we actually got another small admin grant, and the comp plan title was about two inches thick, so the, nobody's gonna read it. So Melissa and Martin are planning staff at the time, and now condensed it to more of a workable comp with land things. When we reviewed this this past week with Martin, who we got him online virtually, many of our planned things five years later are outdated. So besides the water component, there's other items in here, including all of the things from transportation, the park, what facilities need to update, so goals are no longer valid. Some are being completed, some are not the goals we want. But tonight, let's focus on the water. Uh, real quickly, before I turn it over, I'm gonna keep this short. I reached out to Chris LaVey at DOLA. He did confirm that we could apply for a grant to pay for this project. I asked Melissa this afternoon, reach out to Martin Lander, who specializes in comp plans and exactions, to come up with, with a general scope and budget that I'll present to the board next month, and then at that time decide, uh, if we applied for a grant. All the grant is, is a letter from the mayor with certain elements of what we're trying to accomplish, and Chris has the authority as original board director to grant that twenty-five thousand dollar fifty-fifty match grant. And those are really, actually, we've had about ten or more years of different things, so. All right, Melissa, this intro, it's a much boring topic, and we just had this going.
It's going. Well, good, I, you know, in my mind, I think this started last, from last fall, when we did the water, um, smart water conference. And so we had like four or five sessions where we were really focused on water. We had, you know, a small group of us that were doing that. And from that, one of our outcomes was that we needed to update our comp plan to do that. And so as we started to look at that, recognize that, and there was a House Bill twenty-ten ninety-five that was, obviously, twenty-twenty, that looked at some things that we need to add, and part of that is, uh, water conservation, which we actually don't address at all in our comp plan right now. Um, sort of our water supply and facility planning, which we addressed some of it, like right now, we have a description of, of what, where our water comes from, and a little bit about, you know, the size of some of the facilities, but it doesn't, it doesn't go far enough, and then, um, the, the issue of the suitability of our supply, right, I mean, what's changed in the last five years, part is the cost of CBT, and so the, the, the the cost of water is just such a, a factor now, and as well, it's always been scarce, but we feel it more and more. I mean, I know you guys feel that more and more. So anyway, part of it is we need to integrate some of these ideas, we need, we'll need to pull some of that from you guys. We'll try to have something as interesting as this, we do that, but I can't guarantee it. But, um, you know, to see what we need to, what we need to say, what is the community's vision now about water? Um, so, but as, as we kind of got into that and started to unpack it, it has implications, obviously, throughout the document, which at the moment, some, some plans are doing water as a standalone theme, and some are doing them as an integrated. Troy's impulse is that we do it as integrated into these other planned things. Um, you know, so that's something we can talk more about, but it, that's, that would be consistent with how we've done things so far. So that's, that's the biggest, you know, probably aspect of the plan that needs to change. Um, but as you, as we thought about this, you know, the census data, well, is, you know, we have fresh census data to work with. So what the plan doesn't talk about right now is population growth and forecasting, the water plan does. So part of this is linking the water plan to our comp plan, um, but we need to get some good population growth numbers. You know, that has implications, obviously, in everything that we do, and so that's, there's an opportunity to update that. Um, you guys have given Troy direction that are in our three-mile area plan, and you have that, um.
This is, I think it's in your packet, the, the proposal.
Yeah.
So I'll jump on board here.
Yep.
So we met last week with Mark Land, Mark Landers online, and then Paul Mills, we use Mills', um, studio.
Russell Mills.
Russell Mills, and they do urban mapping for a comp plan, because they have the software. So we talked about, there was some discussion about going east, kind of making this a, a true, kind of a square three mile. Some communities, basically, for the pinpoint in the middle of the city, they make a circle. I don't like that because you're, you're cutting properties in half, makes no sense. So I'd like to go along property lines or road lines, even though properties may be on both sides. So my initial idea, since we're only at the cemetery, this is kind of a twenty-seven, which is technically public, but not a road, much of a road. Going out three miles to thirty-three, but then you have some issues, because with your three-mile area plan, it cannot be any longer farther away than three miles of your current last annexed property. So if you go too far here, you're, you're going beyond the three miles, you can't do that. So we thought about using thirty-eight to the north, going up to thirty-one. Sorry, thirty-one, coming down to twenty-four, where, where we're at the south, and then coming back over. You've incorporated these first two miles east of the cemetery. And that was the, the general thought that we had to kind of square it up more, and then the core platform would be in the center of that three-mile area plan. So that's kind of what we're looking at doing with your direction, but that's okay. We're, we're somewhat restricted with the, we have to follow that, not farther than three miles from the closest annexed property. So we use, Mark Lander said, let's use the cemetery as our, as our clue to go east. And then that would, is when you go southeast and northeast, and you still are in that frame, so, kind of what are your thoughts on that? But with this map, all the maps in the comp plan, the official zoning map, the urban growth boundary map, the three-mile area plan map, uh, they all need to be updated, so part of this process, uh, like, this is our map that has our own logo, simple thing. Some of our dated twenty fifteen, and some are dated twenty seventeen. I want consistency in our mapping. That's very simple to do, but the boundary will be the biggest key component. Plus, like on here, the, the Nelson's annex in twenty seventeen is not even shown on this map, so we have some cleanup to do, which is very minor. But the importance of this is if somebody in the future years east of Platteville wants annexing the Platteville, they really technically can't, because they're not in our plan boundary. That's the purpose of our plan boundary. So that's how we brought up the people of sixty-six from the Dalkeville. You know, that's how we brought in Nelson's a few years ago, and years ago, how we first brought in Sod Buster with Craig Sparrow. And then, um, Milwaukee Hofstra at thirty-eight, that's why we brought them in, because they were in our, in our area. So, uh, so that's the dimension regarding the map, so that's the process we're going to mention tonight, and that'd be part of this whole process with the comp plan update.
Yeah, and it's really very timely, because it's been five years, you know, so that's a good equivalent, we think, of it. Um, and a lot of the structure and the way it's functioned, and we'll get your input on that, but has worked pretty well from our perspective. And it is, there's so many goals and things, we've met, you know, we've accomplished those. So, um, looking at what, what are the next set of goals? So that'll be a really important part of the discussion, is what, what are the priorities?
Definitely want to bring in our, um, farms.
Yep.
Definitely want to bring in our farms.
In terms of a comp, in having conversations with them, yeah.
And the key requirement that Melissa was talking about, Chris LaVey submitted the latest DOLA grant guidelines, and on page twenty-one, we're about to go tonight. It spells out specifically, in order to apply for DOLA grant, you have to make sure that you implement and meet certain requirements. One of them is a strong community engagement component, which would introduce the local residents, but inviting camp farms for the pilots and the other people in the area. And Gary Henderson, for example, those are key stakeholders, because when you think about growth, people say, why aren't we growing? Well, the people outside of Platteville have to want to grow the, come to us. There has to be a two-way street.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, and we don't want them, we want to work with them, because we don't want them selling their property and, uh, water to Aurora when we're here.
When the urban growth map, which is the same as our urban, our three-mile area plan, it has all this proposed zoning designation. Well, somebody might come in and say, why do you have my farm zoned this way? I didn't have an input. We didn't have that input.
Yep.
Yeah, and that kind of fits with, we had survey data that was done at the time, and we, we'll need to decide that's something we want to do again. Because again, that's five years old, you know, what's on the community's mind, what's important to them, and that was a tool that we used. So we want to revisit that, um, you know, major things like you, uh, so we're gonna be building a wastewater treatment facility, right? I mean, it's imminent, so those kinds of things need to be updated into it, and then I think finally the goal, so I, I kind of touched on that. So out of that will come, um, the code update, a little bit. So the landscaping regulations are one of the things in terms of water conservation, that'll be really important. And it seems like one of the terms that's getting used is water efficiency to kind of replace conservation, you know, or to speak to it. And I think water efficiency speaks to more than just conservation, it's not about not using, it's about how we use. So I, I think, um, and that might be more palatable to some people also. But in that process of looking at, are there incentives to help people change some of their behavior, like how they use their water? You know, I've, I've done a bunch of research already, but, and, and we'll talk more about this, uh, in a more systematic way, but like the city of Aurora does, has a whole program where they, well, and other, cash, um, cash for grass. So you take, as you take out your grass and you replace it with something that is, um, more zera escape than, than nature, so it uses less water. You actually are getting paid for that, you know, you get some rebate or reimbursement. There are programs that use like landscape in a box, you know, where you purchase, and the city helps you purchase, and, and it looks like there's one, just one company that distributes these, but it's like a hundred square feet, um, you get this box, and it has a certain number of plants, and it plants in the area, that, that, it depends, let's say a hundred square feet. So you get the plan, you know, to, to put into your yard, you get the plants to use it with, and all of that is sort of a water efficient garden, if you will. So it's, the idea is obviously user-friendly, you don't have to know a lot about anything other than the millionest of shovel. So there are programs like that that some cities are using. I think we're, Troy and I have been talking quite a bit about this, like what, what's gonna be the right fit for, for Platteville? And, um, and with your direction. So that's a little bit of the landscaping regulations. What about the water regulations?
In your packet, I've been working and reviewing on certain number of code regulations, again, this is all heightened in the comp plan update. Uh, I don't know if I'm gonna go into a lot of detail tonight, but, uh, looking at the key items, we have some water restrictions we've adopted with, which is from the water consumption district. The biggest items are city dedication requirements, which has only been one for one ever since the town went on the northern in nineteen ninety-four. And if you have a large lot residential property, one for one, probably sounds reasonable, but then talking to developers, Phil Vayner, when he built the energy park, he just cringed because he had to bring in the inner water just to irrigate the sod. You know, at that time, it was thirty-five thousand a unit, now it's sixty-five thousand. So part of this process is looking at our code and, and with, with a one-for-two ratio work based upon lot size, number one. If you have smaller lots, like I live on like just under eight thousand square foot lot, but if you have subdivision that had five thousand square foot lot, smaller lots, you look at, like right now, Valley Village, there's a hundred and fifty lots in Valley Village, technically, every single property needs one unit of water. So look at their yards, there's a couple of water leagues. So in future development, talking to Gary Henderson, because he's got some pretty good ideas growing water. His hesitation as any other developer, his water dedication requirement, because ours was restricted. So if you build a multi-family housing development, apartments, and you look at the fixtures and outdoor irrigation, if there's a non-pot outdoor irrigation source, I by all means, we could easily go one for two or one for three. But until they have a non-pot system, a smaller lot subdivision, I think if we did the math right and we monitored, it could be one unit of water for every two, two housing units. That's developers' cost pack.
If we consider the, the, the future allotments, right, what's the lowest you've ever seen them go?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two percent. So we have to watch that.
They, they normally give fifty percent. This year, we're at seventy-five or eighty.
Seventy-five.
And visiting with another water expert just last week, he anticipates, he doesn't anticipate us getting a sixty percent allotment next year. So, and something else that comes into play on all that is other sources of water.
Right.
I'm not gonna go anywhere else with that tonight.
Even if the developer wanted to come in tomorrow, and we're gonna give him a sweet deal on water, he's gonna be able to find it.
That's just a. CBT, you know, the water source out is based upon a storage, and it's not an infinite amount, I mean, it's down to. And it's not an infinite amount. I mean, it's down to X amount of thousands of gallons or, you know, it's a CBT, that's all that's left. Unless they build more, more storage like NISP.
Well, and CBT is maxed out. They can't take any more storage for it. NISP is an option.
That's a different option.
The, the Windy Gap project is another option. Some of those are associated with the zero, some of them are not. Um, a NISP is going to be about half, somewhere between half and two-thirds. The thing with NISP is with CBT water, we've got a single use. With NISP, we can use it three times.
How?
Um, or twice, I'm sorry. It's with NISP, you can store three and a half times. With Windy Gap, they can, or with, uh, CBT, you can only store one year. But with NISP, you can store three and a half. With the, in Windy Gap Permian project, you can do, I believe it's two and a half. So there are options that, that are out there, but what is the best option? To answer your question, Mike, I had a broker call the other day. He has a thousand shares of CBT at any one time right now that he could move if we had a buyer or if the town is interested. Sixty-four thousand a share.
Yeah.
So.
Sell high.
We have a thousand.
Yeah, and there's, there's eleven, I think there's thirteen communities that bought initially into this project, all up in one of them.
Have you talked to them yet about?
What's that?
Remember they offered some to us to do?
They did and then since that conversation a few years ago with, with Chris and then his predecessor, Paul Haynes. Going to talk to all these communities, they knock it off stuff, they'll sell anything because they don't even know at the end of the day, you know, what this party's going to cost. So they're getting close. They, they've been through multiple lawsuits, like litigation, environmental issues, all of that. My last talk to Chris, um, they'd be, you know, they have a thousand units in this that they really don't need. They have other water sources and they treat their own water. Heck, if we could pump some of our ditch water down there nine miles, I mean, they treat it for us and should have backed it up. That's just not working. The NISP is an option because it's outside of the CBT program. We need to diversify our portfolio. It's locked down now. You can't buy it. Not till Northern says, you know, they know they're going to share. Some of these towns, like Fort Worth, they bought way too much, but they're preparing for the future. But with the NISP right now, it's an annual fee as to maintain those rights. So it's like a thousand bucks a year per unit is roughly what they're paying. But at the end of the day, when the NISP bucket is built and the bond is sent out, these eleven communities will be saying, or being, be giving a, a letter saying, okay, your proportion shared now is X millions of dollars. So most of these communities have to bond out that infrastructure or that cost unless they have cash on hand.
Or they sell.
Or they sell. So Fort Worth wants to sell, but right now their hands are tied. I told Chris, when those hands aren't tied, we're definitely, we'd be interested in picking up some units. But we're not the budget for that. Or at the end of the day, we're going to bomb that out through our water enterprise, going to pay that debt obligation off. It's going to be another long-term debt bond, which is going to be. So, um, when I talked to Gary, it's no secret, he's talked for years about, he's got a lot of water rights in his property north of town. Huge well capacity with, with a, what he calls an overflow, Gary Calzare, one thirty-four. His idea is do like a metro district. Right now, the town doesn't allow you that stuff. So that's one thing, part of these regulations, again, there's many spokes in this will conversation.
We don't allow metro districts?
Not necessarily.
We haven't adopted the regulations to allow them. We always do that in the, in the update.
In our code strictly says, you know, when their contract with Northern since nineteen ninety-four, when they go through central water as a distributor, we're not allowed to go outside of that agreement. So David and I at some point, which is risky business, sit down with Northern and renegotiate a contract that goes with that Northern box.
Right.
But that's the reason to take because we can't for the future, long future, that will just be solely around CBT. We can't survive it. So whether we treat our own water, where, or Gary builds in a treatment plant, uses his water rights. And then the part of that conversation is our code requires that all that, he builds a nice facility, treat water for his development, he has to dedicate all of the town. If you don't want to do that, why would you? You're losing all your rights. So how do we work out that? So it's, it's pretty evolved when it comes to these regulations, so. Uh, so these are all part of the comp plan. When I look, when I look at the comp plan, which is confusing, I try to explain to my wife, she thinks I'm a navel or something. But a comp plan is your, is your core plan, is your general broad vision. And from that stands your transportation plan, your capital improvement plan, your water plan, on and on and on. But your comp plan, as Melissa indicated, needs to identify all those plan themes in general and be your general guide because it's your growth guide. Because the way it's supposed to work is when the plan commission, the board trustees considers an annexation, they should be looking at the comp plan as your reference guide. Are we following the community's vision for growth? That's what the comp plan is all about. So we actually need to get back to making this a working document and update it regularly like we want to do now. So I've asked Melissa in the next few weeks to talk to Mark Lander, come up with a general scope and budget, which I'll present to the board. And then at that time, I'll talk to the board about whether we fund this on our own or if we go out for a DOLA grant for administrative funds to do that. So again, this is the first of several conversations. Since the water, uh, smart plan, we've kind of thrown a whole code hit, all that kind of stuff. Now I want to get back on this because we need to make this a priority in the future, even though it's a very bore, boring and dry subject. It needs to be talked about because everything you talk about, from Main Street improvements to growth to master plants to wreck, you have to have the water. And we just don't have it for that amount of growth. Mentioned landscaping, I'm going to leave with this one. Northern Water, our research in the end of the day, they have some great programs. We've never really utilized. They have a grant program, they'll come into our government, they'll assist with the water efficiency audit. And when it comes to our landscaping requirements for new development, both commercial, industrial and residential, I want the board to think about going down the road, uh, like this article I put in your packet, about doing zerescaping. Not zero scape. Zero scape means no vegetation. You just rock everything basically. The traditional landscaping requires a certain percentage of property to be sod, trees, blah, blah, blah. Zerescaping is a combination of both. It's water efficiency. You still have your, your livestock. You still have your trees, your plants. But you just don't have hundreds of yards of just grass to mow. That's your most consumptive use of water is sprinkling your yard. But if you put in a yard or a, you look at the energy park, for example, without us knowing and thinking about it, look at the Casson property or not so much Anadarko, but look at our islands up by Town Hall by accident. It's like take out these ugly bushes, put in the trees and a handful of nice decorative colorful plants, walk the rest of it, grip system. We're saving a ton of water, but it looks nice. So in the future, as we build this, I'm looking at, at the Greenbelt Rogers Farm, downsizing the Town Hall property, we have to leave by now. Your green spaces, like your parks at Lincoln River, you can create conflict. So you have wells and you have water rights. Irrigate the park out of them, make them green and nice for the kids playing on them. But that's kind of where we're going with the efficiency part, so. Talking real fast, I apologize, but, um, that's kind of game plan. We'll come back with the scope and the budget. We just, I did, I spent an hour on the, on the last topic, but it was a very worthwhile topic, so we'll get to this more in a T-shirt if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I'm good. I think it did.
Remember, Melissa just ran with that one.
You ran. You're the boss, you get to run. But do you guys have any comments or thoughts or areas that we need to?